I like your wife's editorial.
Oh, yeah.
Did you see it?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, I do have it for her.
Well, no, but I meant, did you see it in the paper?
Yeah, I did. I was looking online and it took like three, four days to get out of my...
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought he said, because the tennis was poor. A lot of time to be able to...
Can't do nothing without him.
Nope, he knows about it.
Hmm?
He knows.
Oh, yeah, he posted it on Facebook, he said. Oh, and she also said you have his last name spelled wrong on your webpage.
Okay, then I'll change it.
I didn't see that Facebook one. It was online, it's how you know what time. But I don't remember the time or the date, so it's up there.
Yeah, yeah.
On the website?
Yeah. Normally, this one isn't posted because it's state, state set. Always the first, the only ones we usually post other than that are the ones that, like the work meetings, stuff like that. First Wednesday.
Okay.
I mean, if tomorrow were the first, this wouldn't actually...
Sure, sure. I just wanted clarification. That is the first Wednesday.
Yeah, because when they set up, they have to notify the state, because there has to be a regular state issue planning board meeting. And when somebody from out of town wants to know something, they can get on the state, it's right there. Now, work session meetings, we have to post that.
Yep.
This one's funny. I'll get that. Captain went to the store, saw the badge, and just saw the chocolate. And all of theirs, their rolls were heavy. Well, okay, some access later, she didn't have her badge, or else somebody else had it. She was just putting that region new, right? And that is all, is itself, is itself, transitive, everything you can think of. Now, one, now one of the three. And I said, well, I'm gonna find out. And I didn't know what... She had to dig. She just told me the chocolate, and she said, and kind of figured out what was going on. And quite sensitive. Did she tell you where it came from?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, because I was like, what? And then she told me where it came from.
To this level, she doesn't care, right?
No.
P R O S T.
Put your name on the website, could I add a few? What's the clock, thank you?
Seven.
Seven o'clock, so I will call a meeting to order. First, I'd just like to make a little announcement with all of the... I don't even know how to say it. Anyways, I spoke with Mr. Mayhew. And he did resign from the position that he held on the planning board. His term was up in November. And when he was given the papers to reassign, to re-up, he just determined that he had other things that would take precedence. He'd spent things close to forty years on his own joint planning board. And that was, it was time to put some other things first. So, that's just what happened. Wasn't, it was just bad timing, but he's done a very good job supporting the town and being part of the planning board, and that was just his choice. And I just wanted to make that clear for everybody, that it was just his determination to put other things in priority. We do have our new member. We have at least one of the candidates I expected to have here today. But we always start with old business first.
About a year or two ago?
Two years.
Yeah.
I think I got four copies. There's two plans. There's a topo plan.
And again, when I live on Winter Road, I'm not an actual butter. But I would like the board, well, I'm not an actual butter, but I'd like the board to make a determination that I can speak to this, and I would like you to make the determination that I can speak to this. I am not an actual butter.
Yeah, because you're way far enough away.
Way far away from it, but I wanted to...
You're way far enough away. I mean, there's what, four properties between them there?
At least, and several, forty acres.
Yeah.
Yeah, but...
Oh, no, we'll just drag this on for another month, draw a forum.
Mr. Mayhew, which one is the actual, has the ads on it? Is that the other side?
That's the house, yeah. There's actually one called...
One lot, essentially?
Yeah.
Which one's already there?
The house.
This one's already here?
Yeah.
Okay.
See what she did in the test pit?
Yeah.
On lot two. Remove this and carry over.
Three sixty-five, three sixty-three. Does that ATV trail cross this property? Because since splitting... Four and a half percent.
Private agreement from across there, because it doesn't come across here.
No.
Okay. Okay, okay, cool. Yeah, I knew it, I, right, yeah, I knew it was on his.
It goes from here.
Yeah.
Out way back around, down bay, off the map, actually.
Yeah. Yeah, because I didn't know about this part that you just added, if that was, yeah. Because they were doing private stuff with them, they got the town stuff.
Yeah, that's what it feels. Yeah, no, 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 no trails at all. Not even thrown.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a benefit of the existing house.
Yeah, yeah.
Field and stuff like that. That's what's there. This is the thing that I had on, basically. That's the sliver right here.
Yeah.
Because I only had five and a half acres. So I couldn't subdivide it into...
Couldn't enough.
Right, so I bought two some... To make the whole sum closer to ten, then I could sub...
Yeah.
That was the whole premise of that. And that was passed back in, in October of seven...
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. You have to show the state you have available for subject.
And that tests and perks?
The subject system's almost smaller.
Pretty much Jim Morgan. Jim Morgan, Michael.
Just those two.
Well, don't you have to check with this Tom Leslie guy, make sure that he wants you to have it there?
He's good with that.
He is.
You okay with it, Joe?
Oh, yeah.
What Phil said you wanted.
Yeah, no, I mean, as long as the other paperwork's good, yeah.
No, I know. If you have...
Get started.
Do you have an extra copy? Of this plan? Do you have an extra copy?
Yeah, I have my little copy, yeah.
No, an extra paper copy?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Can we, can we have an extra paper copy?
Sure, you know, four, I guess four here.
Can we have an extra paper copy? I just want to have one.
What's that? Uh, I'm not sure. I may not be. I'm planning now, Steve.
It just helps, I find it, actually.
Check the distances and...
So, everybody's okay?
I'm, I make a motion, we check. Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we had already double-checked all of the...
Have the roadway from every state. Have the letters from central. Have all that stuff. Who submitted the state? Michael Forlatti.
He doesn't, he doesn't like serpents.
Yeah, he would take serpents, I don't know what laws.
We can approve the guy, but it's a time. So, this is a big deal to the subdivision from the state, because this is... Because it's on a state road, you don't get approval for the current light.
For a familiar review of Fletcher Road. I have two big copies. Just came from there, I think I left them sitting.
That's new business, all right? It's not how fast it is in the old business.
I know, this is one we brought, a big copy.
No, I'm trying to do them.
Which one did you draw up here?
Reagan tried to do somebody.
That one here is the Department of Transportation.
Just want to... Thank you for bringing up, I'll give you, I'll give you my cabinet. So that's the driveway. I'm just gonna assume that we found it already, because I know we went over it.
It is. Phil, like Donald written, had a couple of questions, was concerned with the setback on test pit. We did more, and that's reported, these now. Should be, that was really all pending. It's the setback on test pit, which was just a town not digging the middle of it, it's just a field.
That's just the driveway.
Oh, yeah, Reagan told me he was getting it.
We dug it on the side, so that I didn't have to fix the field, you know? Sort of like that.
How many of the paper copies do you want signed?
How many do they normally do?
We usually sign four, and then we keep two, and they keep two. And then there's that two, that's a third, right? Just going to take a look. Look at it.
Nothing else? Is this that?
Is that?
Put it in the... Thank you.
All right.
Put this on the phone.
Do we have any other?
On team case, I want to, we have to register it, and then we'll be able to finish the rest of us.
So what is, what is...
Well, she'll be able to straighten out where to put these until we get the number of the other. I mean, you can put it in much probably.
Yeah.
But for now, then you should have the state on top of it, and the other, because it's November. Yeah. But she'll be able to take, she's got a better idea of it until that's...
That only if you tend to sort it for me. I mean, if you was getting it, it's... I mean, I guess I don't know.
You can fill it out, yeah.
Okay.
All set? Is there any other old business before the board?
Yeah. That can have, that can have to be done between the average...
Good. Good.
So I have a question on this, while we're talking about those. Are you gonna provide additional copies, the after those?
Yeah, I have four, yeah.
If we can get those, then I can post them on the website, so that people can actually go and... Well, yeah, but they're 2015, that's the last that I have.
Yeah.
All right, so how long are you going to be with the new? Jim, we're gonna go ahead and take them first, if you don't mind. All right.
Oh, subdivision, I've got a private one on Fletcher Road. I had the big map. It's a, it's like the first house on the right, on Fletcher Road, Johnson's. Why don't you, Johnson and Ron's here.
Ron's here, my dad, yeah.
They have seventeen point one acres altogether. And we just proposed to take a five acre lot off on the north side of that. The sun, it's pretty much by the new Bruger, around Lake Anjumeere, on the north in the back. Topo is pretty good land, there's no mountains or, you can see it's an old pasture land.
And so, it's gonna be basically kind of a square.
Yeah, yeah.
And the drive, they'll come off of Fletcher Road.
Yep, probably, there's kind of, probably the side called, because it's in a protection.
Is the land in current use?
Yes, yes, yeah. In a transfer. I'll have a big copy, you can check out the spelling on that. Could get finalized, it is probably... I guess I just want to confirm, we have lots of our five acres, we don't need to do a test bit right now.
Yeah, you're ready, the topo looks securely fine.
Yeah.
Thank you for putting that on, and small, as...
For the meeting minutes, can I just have your name? I'm sorry.
Mike Johnson?
Thank you.
Yeah.
The owners are Ron and Judith Johnson. The owners are Ron and Judith Johnson.
Thank you.
They can keep, you can keep those two.
Melissa, the guy's map is fourteen, and the lot is one forty-six.
Thank you.
It's a fairly, it's a fairly flat lot, and then surrounding here is not giving off, like Fletcher's.
Class one.
Former classified rules. Well, I think it's not true, even next to your dad.
I do too.
Just want to put that up.
Yeah, thank you.
Looks out open a few months, right?
Yeah.
Are you, do you have any conditions or problems?
No, everything, I mean, he's got enough road tronics to put a driveway in, plenty of acreage, I really don't see a...
So we can schedule a meeting, so that notices for meeting February.
Make sure you get it in the paper.
February is next month.
February is this month, today's the first of February.
I'll tell you what, I...
And this is a short month, aren't we supposed to be... How many days are we supposed to have the notices for?
Well, the town usually does ten, it's seven in the regs, but we normally try to do ten.
Yeah.
Okay, then we have ten, okay.
I'll just in the paper, I'm going to take it in the paper.
Yeah.
So if we're going to have this post run, this is minus subdivision, so we're supposed to do public hearing for a minor subdivision or are we supposed to do a public hearing for all?
All subdivisions.
New board. Trying to get some things together, we're going to be putting together some procedures and changes and stuff so that everybody is all on the same page with everything.
Happy to have your suggestions.
Absolutely. When we have working, working meetings, you know. Absolutely need all the help and the suggestions we can get. I don't. So as long as we can get it up and on the agenda for next month. See any problem?
Yep. So would that be considered not public hearing? I think, I think that it's a, it's a.
We didn't come to a meeting in the summer.
I know. There was notice from the center. It was interesting that I come in.
Yeah, it would be a public hearing.
Yeah, yeah.
Postings in the paper, is that something we need to do or is that something they do?
We do.
We do it.
Yeah, they take care of the others. Posting it.
Okay.
Yeah, we will recover.
You want me to write something up?
Forget to do that, it's something, we're still in trouble, so.
Is this summary? Are you going to put it in the paper?
Yeah, we'll put it in. Yeah.
If you want to email it in, if you want to, I think having some kind of summary written would be best. And I can post it on the website, which I also covers a Sunday public hearing.
The, well, the newspaper posting in here would be, would be plenty, but the website, you know, that just adds to it. Because we haven't determined that the website's official yet. Once it, all the votes are worked out, we, and the board votes to make it official, then all that stuff counts.
Give a calendar, Kim. Kim, you have a calendar, what's the date of the next meeting?
Wednesday, March first.
Wednesday, the first.
You know, man. Twenty eight days, right?
Thank you. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, you too. So Mr. Pesci is here. He has given us a letter and would like to be considered candidate for planning board member. So I asked him to come in, I have a couple of other people also who wanted to be candidates that were not, were not going to be able to make this, this meeting. So I'm just wanting to let you know that we wanted to have an meeting with you because we'd already set it up and don't have another candidate for this meeting. So they'll be made to the next meeting and then we're going to go ahead and make our recommendation. But thank you for coming in and thank you for letting us know that you wanted to be part of this.
Sid. I mean, is it just a recommendation, the select board makes the decision?
The select board appoint whoever would make the recommendation.
It's, it's more or less up to the planning. I mean, we say whoever comes forward from the planning board.
So Mr. Pesci has been a member of the Craig's School Board, it says for six years. And worked with distribution and execution of the school choice tuition program. And overseeing the formation of the Craig's Independent S A U. So a lot of work in public service. And then served, you also served on the zoning board. How many, how many years on the zoning board?
Years, I wasn't that long, it was a lot of years. Didn't meet much, but I was involved in a lot of things regarding the rebuild, so I'm here for a second. But it was, it was not regular, like.
You're right.
That's, you had to, supposedly.
They, yeah, they're, they're meeting more regularly now because they're, they're updating the zoning ordinances, they're having a lot of working meetings. And it's been a very good war between the zoning board and the planning board. We're trying to do a lot of overlap and updating the ordinances and the rigs, which are, or you know, as you know. So, but yes, you're right, they didn't meet on a very regular basis. So tell us a little bit more about, you know, what you're interested in the planning board.
Okay, well, I, I always figure that something like this, there's two questions that you're going to want to answer for you. That is, why do you want to be here and what are you bringing to the table? Right? So let me just go that way. I want to be on the planning board because I have a keen understanding of the work of the planning board, specifically the act of planning. That's what I mean, I, I, one of my hair quotes reminds me now where he said, heard about a farm and plants are useless and the planning is indispensable. I'm, I'm very associated, you know, a lot of tuition details, I'll plug it right up front, don't really concern me. What does concern me as a citizen is that we have a plan, the plan is based on what we want. I mean, the step we'll have to forget is, what do we want to be? What do we want to accomplish? It's used to say, let's plan maps and, and say, we like this, we don't like this. Let's, it needs to be guided by what we want the town to be like. And I, I grew up with the Oregon Illinois, which is a sprawl capital, the best really. And I've seen the difference between well-planned communities and poorly planned communities. I actually created, uh, the city of Woodstock, Illinois. And the seventies, they formed those called the Old Valley specifically because they saw the sprawl everywhere. And they want, they didn't want it to happen to them. And I, I remember those, to predict, I found after a while was how it was, went from a half of the same house on the Old Valley, because everyone wanted to be Old Valley because they did it right. They, they retained their quality of life, and well, that guy broke off some, which is kind of a thing. So I understand the value of effective planning and the peril of ineffective planning. So that's why I want to be here, okay? As far as qualitative, the ones I listed, I think one, I'm a little more subjective, but I want to say anything. My wife and I have in the last, since two thousand nine, we've bought four pieces of vacant property in the state of New Hampshire. It was just mainly investment, I ended up taking hunting, but that's another story. That process, and I just did on a big one last year. I've learned a lot about what goes into the whole thing, of the maps you guys just looked at, the, some of the rules, setbacks, what you can build, what you can't build because of my paramour of buying land is that if you find something that's not built on, because I've seen it happen to many people. So I have a lot of familiarity, in fact, you guys might know, the real estate market was a mess last year. I got, I never had to bid up anything before, but this last time I had to bid up, it was frustrating, I think I lost out on six bidding wars before we finally got one. And I spent probably November of twenty-one through May of twenty-two, putting on rubber boots every weekend and hiking on something and I was thinking, buy. The maps, the laws, I mean, I've spooked many planning wars, many towns to find out, if you see something that looks fine in Creighton or Newport and in this town, they want you to build on it, that's our thing. So I have a lot of experience in the pitfalls, what towns can do, should do, and shouldn't do to obtain their character. And I, the job of the planning board, I think among other things, is to assess the intended town, what does the town want to be? And implement that. And if we don't do that, we're going to end up with sprawl, maybe not immediately, but I can tell you from my time in the school board, people want to move to Creighton. Developers are also very interested and then I think it's, it's fine to work with them, but if their interests conflict with the town, the town has to hold these down. And that's, that's my personal take on it, that's why I want to do it. And I, I do have a lot of experience, and some guys, fifty years, they'll, they'll do it. But I've done a lot of things like this, that sort of thing, so I think that's why I would make a good choice.
So one of the things that we have to work on is updating our master plan, which is the guiding principle of development and growth. Was done in nineteen eighty's. And while a very good document for the time and very forward thinking is now forty years behind. There's no transportation factor, there's no communication chapter, there's no cell tower chapter, there's nothing that's up to date that would guide the principles of development or current growth. Yes, people are very interested in Creighton. Root Jen is a big core of where people coming through and growing up to London and Hanover and Darpa. And they can't handle the growth anymore in some of the larger communities. And they, people can't afford prices in some of those communities. Anything that's built in Creighton would be very lucrative. So one of the things that the planning board is trying to accomplish is to get another master plan update, which means bringing the community in, having a questionnaire, asking the community what are the goals and criteria. And it can't leave it no growth, it has to be controlled growth. So.
Absolutely. Growth is not evil inherently, but it is when it conflicts with the goals of the town. And again, it's something I've seen happen many times, and I've also seen smart and successful growth. So I'm not against growth, I'm against stupid growth. I guess that's the way to put it.
You guys have any questions for Mr. Pesci?
No, I, I dealt with him before. Yeah, no.
I mean, I guess I have more, a question of the, I mean, I saw it on the website on the fourth, but I'm just trying to, you know, so we're on it and the other gentleman is currently like out of town, right?
Mr. Ross.
Okay, and then is Will, Mr. Baloo, is now an alternate member? Okay. So there would still potentially be, so this would be like the fifth member that's sitting and we, you had just brought up the idea of like also having several alternates?
I would love to have some alternates.
Well, the state requires that we have two.
Okay.
If we, if we had alternates, and this could be another question, but if we had some dedicated alternates that would come to all the meetings and would be part of all of the discussions. And the only thing that they would not be able to do was vote on some of the subdivisions or whatever, not unless we can have a member available. But because they were at all meetings, would then be able to vote. But what I would love to be able to do with our alternates is then say, just in a realm, let's say, Mr. Pesci decided he wanted to be an alternate. Say, okay, let's put him on the master plan committee. And have him just really work with maybe another person on a master plan committee. And they could do that. And it wouldn't be, they could then bring all of that into a working meeting and we could all work. And then we could have another alternate work on excavation regulations. And these are things that I've been doing at home and spending a lot of time. I'd love to be able to clone myself and if they had four or five alternates that could do that, but also be a participating member of the planning board. So the only other question I have is if you weren't, if we didn't decide that we were going to bring you in as a full member, would you consider being an alternate? Because you would be definitely a valuable member if we were to assign alternates.
I would consider it, I'll say, I can't, I can't promise it because it's, it's a little different thing. I mean, it's, it's, I started, well, same work, less influence, that type of thing. So I would definitely consider it because the need, the need is there and on a personal note, I can't stand or lack documentation. And I'm fully, I'm hoping, I can't fit in with it, but I hope it's going to work and God, put yourself in the moment, so I would certainly consider.
Yeah, I'm going to be asking all the candidates, that's the thing. You just desperately need that much help to work on some of the projects that we have coming up.
Well, you're fortunate to have as much interest as there seems to be.
Yes. We're very lucky, so. So do you have any questions for us?
No, I, you, I mean, you explain the timeline, the alternate candidates aren't here, you expect them all for next March and, you know, they'll ask us our questions. So then at some point after that, you guys will make the decision, I think, that's our. Like any of them, I would, I'm specific about this. And I will tell you that what you guys did tonight is a little surprising to me, I'm like, because it seemed to overlap a lot with the zoning board of appeals did all right, but maybe that's because they were initially denied or something, I don't know why that was.
So what was the question?
Well, I mean, they came, they came to you with this plan, saying, this is what I want to do, whatever, apparently you like it, okay, good, sign off on it. The, the one event that consumed a good bit of my time on the zoning board appeals was very similar. But I, but I think one mental difference is that they were initially rejected, or as I think this was initially, yeah. That's, that's what I was trying to get in my mind, like, God, this is closer than I expected in function, and that's why, and I was trying to resolve that. And it's, I have a small sample size, so I don't know, I just want to make sure that data is not a repetition of function, although like I said, I think it's because the other ones previously rejected by the planning board.
And that's, yes, so if we reject them, that's their option.
Okay.
Or if we would put on conditions, we could go to the zoning board and do the hardship.
Okay, that makes sense. I know there'll be one question.
Just getting started, so.
And definitely, you know, I think you were interested in, as soon as we hear from the other candidates.
Thank you.
Anything else? I have. What's, what's the clock say? I'm going by that clock. Seven forty-two. Our call meeting is going to end at seven forty-two.
Your last name? Make sure I spell your last.
But like he said, it would be great to get them off my mind.
So these are from two thousand and fifteen, so there's been subdivisions since then and so, but I'll sample what I have.
Is this for me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, good. I didn't print it out, so. Yeah, I had it printed, I was like debating and I said, I read. Because I didn't want to print the other ones that are scanned, because there's so much dirt, you know, the subdivision one, I read through it, and I was like, if I print it out, I'm wasting. Okay, I mean, I'm okay at the computer usually.
So I will get mom's setup, so we can play, I start asking you right.
Oh, you still have a question? Whatever the public. I thought I was just trying to pull the word out, and it's just working.
I wish I did do the whole thing, but, okay.